Good morning and welcome to our June the 11th meeting for 2025. We have a full house today. Like to thank everyone for be here, being here and Brian Good, would you please lead us in the Road to Legions?
I would like to introduce this group of the land, the United States of America into a republic for which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, Mr. Assessor, any of them?
All right, we got several items here, so these are the back pages of the land books you guys have assigned every year, so the easiest way to do it is start with your way down and so you don't have to write it down before you and say, pay the top line version.
You guys have an easy, you can look for my signature. Seek it out every time.
The second thing is Ruth's got a letter from John Patricia Runway. And they're, they live over the Meadowbridge area. Their mailing address is Meadowbridge. They live in the Haven District, rise to the home of them. So we've charged them inside the city limits for their vehicles. So this is the amount we overcharge and we can do, we've already fixed current year, so current year, five years is all where that is like $219 cents, but.
Well, I mean that we approved the reimbursement for overpaying Mr. and Mrs. Runway's property taxes.
Second, got a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we, okay, so we'll give this to Anthony for an order.
Okay. Real motion.
I move that we approve the exoneration.
Second.
Got a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, got two refunds, but one of them is that Kristen Smith, so we're gonna hold off on that until next meeting when I get the final numbers from the audit. The other one is Melissa Humphrey, which was also a county commission order.
Yeah, who's on another agenda? So just, is this a different one?
No, that's the same one. The same one. This is just the actual refund. You guys approved it.
We've already approved it, so we just, John just needs to sign it. Okay. We don't have anything combined or divided lands?
No, I am.
Okay, sweet.
That was a busy morning for you.
It was, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Bachelors and invoices.
Oh, a couple of things. One is, I see, I saw this one fire chief, I saw two fire chiefs back there, but on the, when the fire chiefs are submitting for their reimbursement, can you have another person in your fire department initial off, like whoever on your board or whoever you have? As your backup for spending initial off on the fire chief reimbursement ones. Some, some fire departments are doing it, but some fire departments are not doing it and the fire chief himself is signing off on his own reimbursement. We just wanted, that's part of the policy that we submitted. I'm, I'm not gonna hold up the reimbursements for that, but.
But I need that first, we're getting the reimbursement, we don't find that, although we asked John.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he would like to address the the expenses.
Yeah. Thanks, Bush, on the Golden River. We put in, I believe, the last time or time before for, for some equipment. Well, in the meantime, I've heard that we've already lost our money from last year. Now whether that is true or not, but I want to know if y'all approve it. Will it be paid out of the 24, 25 budget? On this equipment that we requested.
We would be spending anything we approved before July 1st is gonna come out of the prior levy cycle budget.
Okay, that's what, that's all, so, of course, I heard the rumor that we'd been lost our money. And I wanna make sure that we come out of next year, so we would have no money.
Nobody's lost money, sir. The, the money's still there. It's just a matter of we're, we're treating it differently. We're doing it based on need and not based on how people budgeted the last four years.
I just wanna find out if you do approve it. If you don't, that may end up, that still goes the same way.
It's not gonna come out of your budget for next year.
And we could not, right?
It won't come out of your budget for next year.
Okay, that's all I had, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, there was a question I had about, does anybody know anything about Meadowbridge's garage door and the fiber modes? We, about $4,000 worth of expenses.
I do not. John, do you know anything about Meadowbridges?
John, you? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to know more about that one, so.
I would too.
Um, but other, otherwise I'm good. So I move that we approve vouchers and invoices with the exception of the garage door. The two garage door expenses, the one for $34.89 and the one for $459 for fiber modes for Meadowbridge, pending more information from the fire chief.
Second, have a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need to pay everyone.
I move that we, uh, approve payroll.
Four?
Four.
Six thirteen.
Yeah, six thirteen.
Okay. I'll second. Have a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye, sorry, I was asking one person to follow up on something.
I was still looking at Meadowbridge.
Uh, moving, we approve the minutes.
Second.
And we have three meetings worth of land ups. Don't we have two special meetings? Any, what do we have?
There's actually three special meetings and I think two regular meetings. I think one of the regular meetings.
Not, yeah, cuz I think, was it the 14th? There was three, there was two special and the regular. And the 13th, there was a special. What do I still owe you? I think just the regular of 14.
Okay, I don't think, I thought I edited that one.
You sent me back a special.
Yeah, you sent the two special. I might have saved over one of them. Okay, yeah, cuz I edited it. I.
Mine was long. It was like six pages.
Right. Yay. Okay, so this is for the 5/13 special meeting, the five, two special meetings on 5/14 and a special meeting on 5/23, but not our regular meeting because we have some confusion on the many sets that I received.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second.
Right.
Uh, so we have motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those the ones you sent me yesterday that I said I had edited?
Yeah, I can send them again.
You don't need to. I'll look it up.
Okay, and, um, the status settlements.
There were those states settlements.
Yeah, I just need a motion.
I maybe we, well, I can't, I've got to stay.
Yeah, I move that we approve the status settlements.
Okay, I'll second. We have motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye. I can't cuz I know somebody on it. Well.
Came from this one.
You want him to just sign this one? It's on the second page, but it sounds like it is.
Here's our minutes. And this.
Oh, he has the original.
I'll have it second.
Thanks, Ruth.
You're welcome.
It's gonna be one of those.
It's already been one that says my dog got out.
Okay, all right, um, Ruth.
Yeah, so the first thing you guys have is the thank you letter from Footmad and that I heard and Brian.
I asked that that be on here because let me, let me find the letter. Does anybody have it handy? Oh, wait, I have it. Um, Footmad comes to our park on a regular basis and annual basis and wrote us a really kind letter lauding how wonderful the camp is now. And specifically named the two of you and Brian and, uh, John in their, um, let's see, who else? But, or Jerry, I'm sorry, Jerry. Why did I say John? Did you say John? Um, but Brian and Jerry specifically, um, for why they had such a good time. So I wanted you both to come to thank you and to let you know that we appreciate, um, you're representing the county so well.
Hey, this is, this is John.
John?
Yeah, Jerry was, Jerry, Jerry.
Okay, once you say John, you threw me off.
John's our electrician. He rolls in tight.
I don't have my glasses on right now, but.
You guys have really gotta meet John. John came on about a year ago. You know, it's, it's hard to get the right people to do the right job. First of all, the whole group does a really awesome job on those camps. I mean, this camp, camps that have been around this long know what's going on and they've seen improvement and these, you know, they, they can give you critiques and they can also give you accolades at any moment. And that's always, that's the thing. They're the first camp of the year, so it's super nerve wracking. They show up right when the water gets turned on. It's, it's a hard push. I brought John in to kinda recognize him and the rest of the group to kinda getting things ready like that, cuz then we have like a three week, two week wall. This year, Footmad was week after week after week, we had trout herb, we had Easter, we had all this stuff piled up the way the calendar went this year, and John, these guys pulled right through.
Well, we appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
John's our head for most camps during the weekends when, like if I'm off or whatever goes on, he is our go to weekend guy. He's kinda been, he's kinda stepped into the supervisor role there in a way of when there's a question asked for only being there and here, he's rewired everything now, correct, John? All right, so, uh, I appreciate you guys noticing that work and also John, I like you.
Well, we already knew you did a good job, but it's, it's always nice when the public also recognizes and appreciates. It takes the time to let us know.
Yeah.
So I wanted to make sure and please pass on our, um, thanks to Jerry.
Well, the, the rest of the guys, they, they all, they poured through hard. And then we have another camp next week too. That's when we start camp season. A week after that, we start the store season. So it's, it's game one down there right now. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks. Okay, um, can we do it in a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Bit award. So for the bid award for phase three of the demo bids from the May 14th meeting, they all, did they all check out?
Yes.
Okay, so the lowest bidder was Empire Salvage of Bluefield at $72,000. So I move that we, um, approve that bidder to handle our project for reefer demos phase three.
Second. Here we have a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Leslie Taylor, final grant, grant modification and drawdown.
Oh, she's here? Yeah, see, I need to put my glasses on. I can't see anybody today.
You're like Selma, it's gonna be do, I can't see nothing without glasses. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we have the final paperwork for the, um, community development block grant that was related to the, um, Armstrong PSD fountain water tank replacement project. We can go through these one by one and you can approve them one by one, or we can go through them all and you can approve them at the end. Let me know how you wanna do it.
Let's just do it all in one shot.
Okay.
I agree.
Well, the first thing that we have is the final grow request. This has, uh, the contractor's final pay application, the engineer's final invoice and final invoices from region four for a total of $192,467.55. The next item that we have is project budget amendment number five, and this budget amendment requests the recapture of the funds that we didn't use during the project. There's also the, uh, CDBG amendment number six. This amendment indicates that we are recapturing the unused grant funds and extends the period of performance to allow us to complete the final paperwork. We believe that the final paperwork would be done by the end of the month, but our counterparts with the CDBG program ask that we go ahead and extend the date about three months to give them time as well to go through it. And then the last document we have is the final performance report for the project, and this just explains the project, who was served and, and what was spent. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I've looked through everything you sent us. Thank you for letting us know. Um, I'm gonna move that we approve the, uh, how would I care draws up Wesley's project? Wrap ups for these projects.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye. Was this Jack Homeland Security Grant?
Leslie, might as well stay up here and do your thing.
Oh, right.
Maybe you will.
No.
Slink on out of here.
Ruth's on it this morning.
Thanks, Ruth. So, um, Commissioner Brenneman asked me to come today to talk a little bit about region four, what we do, and, um, I hope I don't bore you to death because a lot of people think this is really, really boring stuff. So, um, in 1971, the Regional Planning and Development Act mandated that West Virginia be divided into 11 regions to serve as developmental districts. So this would more effectively utilize funding resources and maximize small communities' chances to get funding and also, um, foster community cooperation throughout the state. So region four, um, we, of course, are one of the 11 regional councils and we cover a diverse area in West Virginia. We have Fayette, Nicholas, Webster, Greenbrier, Popeyes County. And, uh, a useless fact is region four has the biggest geographic region in the whole state. So we're a regional agency primarily responsible for overseeing the orderly growths of development of the area that, that our region encompasses. Um, we're involved in project planning and development. We provide technical assistance to local governments, uh, assistance with implementation and improvement of water and wastewater systems. We also target areas for industrial and economic growth. We administer grant and loan services and provide inter, uh, intergovernmental reviews, which are state and federally mandated. Uh, we also have worked with some improvement of healthcare facilities. We do broadband and we also do the expansion of recreational facilities and activities. So basically, we help local governments, public service districts, nonprofits turn ideas into action. Um, we also serve as a bridge between local governments and state or federal agencies to ensure that the regional interests are represented. Our key functions, um, grant writing and administration. We help local governments, uh, nonprofits and other organizations apply for and manage state and federal grant and loan funds. A few of those, and I'm sure you all may be familiar with these, the Community Development Block Grant is one of those through, um, US Housing and Urban Development. We also work with the Appalachian Regional Commission, West Virginia Infrastructure and Goffs Development Council, USDA and the, uh, Department of Environmental Protections Clean Water and Drinking Water Treatment Revolver Funds. We also assist with the planning and funding of infrastructure projects, water, wastewater, broadband and, uh, GIS mapping. We work for, with, uh, community and economic development to sustain growth in the region. And we also collaborate across regional lines too, to bring together leaders from different areas to work on projects that go across county lines. Uh, we don't have as much opportunity from state lines as other regions do, but we do try to cross over into county lines and bring everybody together when possible. So our team, not only do we work in this region, but we all live in this region too. So we all come from the counties that we serve. And we're all familiar with our communities and the leadership in those communities and our priorities, the priorities of our leadership across the region. So our, our functions, uh, or our budget consists of public funds derived from federal, state and local sources, as well as our fees from grant loan administration activities. Our local funds are derived from local assessments of the five counties and 26 municipalities as represented by the Regional Planning and Development Act. Our state funds come from legislative, legislative appropriations and federal funds come from the Appalachian Regional Commission and the Economic Development Administration. Our governing membership is made up of each of the 26 municipalities served by, uh, the council, a representative of each county commission and also private sector members to ensure that every community, regardless of their size, has a seat at the table. Uh, we are currently administering 102 projects totaling well over $350 million. In Fayette County alone, we are administering 22 projects with a total cost of just over $82 million. And we have 14 projects in development with an estimated cost of about $56 million. Some examples of our current infrastructure projects in Fayette County are the Whitehead PSD, uh, treatment plant upgrades and bypass removal, which was about 13 and a half million dollars. New Haven PSD has two water line extensions right now that will provide approximately 125 customers who didn't previously have access to public water. Uh, that's about 13.7 million. And then the Dade East Maplewood Water Improvement Project will be opening bids next month at a cost of about $8.8 million. And I appreciate you all asking me to talk about region four. Do you have any questions?
I would like you to tell us the difference between the types of PSD where I only recently learned sadly how New Haven is different than some of the other PSDs that we have.
So New Haven PSD has a public partnership with, uh, West Virginia American Water. West Virginia American Water provides the O and M or operation and maintenance of the lines that New Haven PSD owns. New Haven PSD still has board. They still are able to get, uh, federal and state grants to put in these extensions. But then West Virginia American Water, they earn owed and West Virginia American Water operates and maintains these systems. Also means that at 2:00 in the morning when there's a water line break, West Virginia American Water employees come out, but work on that, not New Haven PSD. New Haven PSD actually has zero employees.
And they're still in place. The other thing though, you know, is certainly relevant to, to the potential sale of these other PSDs is New Haven PSD being in place is responsible for getting water to places that didn't have it, because West Virginia American Water has told us that it would not invest in these areas on its own. It's not a good business decision for them, cuz there's a relatively small number of people, right? So, so if we end up selling these smaller PSDs in Armstrong Creek and Page Kincaid and, um, Canawha Falls, it may still behoove us to have some sort of board in place. Right, to facilitate expansions?
New Haven PSD's been very successful last 30 plus years in extending water service in areas that, um, didn't have water service available. Their, their model has worked very well. Um, they, they continue, we have three more projects lined up behind the two current projects, one of which is partially funded. Um, so that, that model has worked very well for New Haven PSD.
Is that a model that could be expanded in a, in a regional sense, like rather than have, cuz we have trouble staffing our small PSDs, you know, in, in our more remote areas of the county? Um, would it make sense to have, and is it possible to have a regional PSD that did that same thing?
I believe it is. I think the purpose of New Haven PSD in the, in the very beginning, um, I've read through their earliest plan and their plan in the beginning was to be a regional water provider in the air, in served areas of the county in the New Haven district. They, they took in other PSDs that, for Mossy, Beckwith, Salem, Gaywood. Uh, some of those came into New Haven PSD's purview, but then they also worked to, to send or to provide service to currently unserved areas. And it, it just worked very well for them. And, and I can't say enough Kenny Hayes. He was the chairman of New Haven PSD from its inception until just recently, and he did an excellent job.
So how did the, who created New Haven PSD? Does County Commission create it?
Yes.
And then that's something I think we need to start talking about. If, if the sale does go through, I think we really need to look at making sure we have somebody representing our um, citizens in those areas to try, still keep trying to get water expanded to their homes, you know, people who don't have water.
About 36% of red county does not have.
It's outrageous.
It is outrageous. It's, it's 2025. We should all have access to.
49% don't have access to shore.
And I will stand on my same statement that it's 2025. We should all, right, as a world.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We appreciate everything you do, Leslie.
Thank you all. I really appreciate you all asking me to come and speak.
Thanks, Leslie. You can make your next meeting now. Okay, um, you want to do the, uh, correct language for the 9/30?
Uh, yes. With regard to the 9/30 item, the public hearing regarding, you wanna wait until 9/30 to feel? Since it was a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we gotta wait two minutes.
You're right, it's only two minutes. It looks longer on there. Um, so with regard to the 9/30 item, which is the public hearing regarding the dissolution of the sale of Armstrong wastewater PSD, Page Kincaid wastewater PSD, Canawha Falls wastewater and water PSD. Um, I'd like to move to postpone that item and ask the county administrator to duly notice, um, the hearing for June 25th, um, pending receipt of additional information. We thought we were gonna be ready to make a decision on this today, but we're still in contract negotiations and there's some highly relevant um, information that has influenced those negotiations that we have to consider. And Commissioner Brenneman and our lawyer are gonna be meeting about those tomorrow with West Virginia American Water, so it's premature to make the decision. Did I cover everything? Okay, so that's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Here we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. I do reserve the right to discuss this matter in, um, executive session later in the meeting though, because I would like to move that we discuss these updates with council, make sure everybody's up to speed. Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, then Ruth will go back to your.
This is Jack, right? Homeland Security. Okay, Jack, it's actually your turn now.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's, uh, time again to ask for the, uh, Homeland Security Grant. Uh, unfortunately, this morning, I got a email from regional representative that says there is no, uh, a notification for funding. So, uh, the items, uh, will go back and, you know, uh, it's looking like, uh, the right, but honestly, that, uh, uh, some, uh, fallout with Fed and, you know, where the disposition of, uh, FEMA. Um, but, uh, there's a list of, uh, items that we're asking for and, um, this is actually a confined list. It's 2024 and 2025. So were there any questions about, uh, what we requested?
No, I didn't.
No, I didn't have anything. Are, are you saying that it's not been funded yet? Is that what you're saying? The grant hasn't been funded yet through
Yeah.
agencies above your head?
Yeah.
But didn't we already approve the application for it then?
You approved 2020. You approved twenty twenty?
Okay, so we need to approve twenty twenty five today.
Correct.
No, I'll probably just come back in front of you and, and get it all approved again.
Okay. All right then. Well, thank you for the update.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
No decision.
But I have another hazard mitigation lease.
I like those.
The lease.
That's at least.
So I moved that we approved the hazard mitigation leases.
Second. Here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
And the WV core renewal is up. I moved that we approved that. That's our insurance, liability insurance.
Second. Have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have, I'll wait for you, son, since this was your.
Armstrong Creek PSD Board Member Appointment.
So we had somebody expire in March. That's why that's on here.
They had somebody expired in March.
The, the appointment expired.
The appointment expired, John.
Okay.
Estep?
I did not get a chance to call this gentleman. Are you familiar? He's Gallow River. Do we have anybody? Armstrong Creek PSD? Well, there's one on here, two for Gallow River. So let's take care of the Gallow River one. Are you familiar with the gentleman that's?
Yes.
Okay.
He is the, uh, the county department.
He seemed to be, yeah, he seemed to be well qualified. I agree. Well, I moved that we appoint him to the Gallow River PSD Board and please thank him for applying.
Second. Motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please note to exchange our meeting times to the evenings of second Thursday of each month.
If you will. Yes. You will make the county aware of that, that way and let. And, and the public. And the public. Make sure it's noted. I applaud you for doing it for the young man. I mean, he has another job.
Gallow River PSD meetings are now on Thursdays at five P M. Which Thursday of the month is that? Second Thursday of the month at five P M. And what, what was it before?
It was ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock in the morning.
Oh, okay. So it's a, it's a big difference. We'll put that on our, our Facebook page and website so people can see it too.
That is, you haven't voted on yet. That is the guy that expired.
His term expired, right?
Do we have, do we have any applications?
This is Mr. Benny Estep. I move that we approve his reappointment to the Armstrong Creek PSD Board.
Since there's no, uh, applications other than him. He's already, he's already on the board. Um, have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We'll start with the new hires. Michelle.
So as you're aware, I had to hire a full-time person for the election. And then replace, and then, and in that I decided to hire the part-time person. And so then I hired for the part-time person. I have Barbara, who you all should know. And Christina is now the new Barbara.
Does she wear that?
I hesitated to call Barbara the new Sarah.
Barbara puts on one hat, put on the other. Same office, just boot chairs.
Just because of the way the pay periods felt, I asked that we start them on June eighth as opposed to making them wait another whole week and a half.
Yes, and our hiring policy does permit electeds who run their hires by us in advance to be hired not per ton, approved not per ton, which is retrospectively.
We did background checks on, on both of them and they came back clean. And Barbara had a couple.
Please whistle that girl.
She got a clear. As long as you got them cleared up, we're all right.
So I move that we approve the new hires for the county clerk's office.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
And that's back to June eighth, you said?
Yeah. And in that, I also ask that as Barbara has been a wonderful and dependable employee from office for over three years now, that we dispense with any probationary period and let her accrue vacation starting with that June eighth.
And we are working on a policy to that effect and I agree with that. I, I move that we approve the, the benefits for Barbara for the full-time position.
At away the probationary.
Yes, thank you.
I second. Here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Well, let's skip the sheriff's department until somebody from that department comes in. Is he? Oh, good. All right, Chief Morris. Is he unmuted? Chief Morris, can you unmute yourself so we can hear you? Okay, let's just move on until we can figure that out.
Ruth, go ahead with her.
His mark homework.
Tell him to type in the thing what he wants us to.
Just type in there what is applied to approve my first one.
The start date. We give him time to do that. Want to go ahead with Matt, your rail trail?
Well, we have the grants and project under too.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and present on that.
So this is to replace Amy when she sent, she decides she's leaving us. And we interviewed one other person, third person already accepted another job, but Elizabeth Daniels. I think she's going to be a really good fit. Our interview was two hours, so.
Normal. She still wants to work here?
She does still want to work here, surprisingly. But she has a lot of the same interests as Amy, so she likes the history, the grants. Very well organized and she's excited to work in the courthouse.
She had a great, great background.
Yeah, so she worked for the state of Nevada doing, um, grants administration and stuff. And she's been a contractor for a while. So she's done website content, multiple things for multiple customers. So she sounds pretty organized. But we'd like her to start on the twenty third of June.
And she came here under the Ascenda program.
I said she did.
So that's pretty cool. So I really thought she, I liked her resume. She looked really well qualified to me. My first rule is judgment. She's made a lot of good hiring decisions. So I move the way approved the hire.
Second. Motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Okay. Well, let's, um, can you tell us what you know about the transport officer, please? Because he's had a technical difficulty.
Yes, so he's actually retired from the federal, federal Bureau of Prisons. And he's looking for something to do. So his name is Rodney Sheaves. He actually started Monday. And has multiple years' experience going like what a transport officer needs to do, so.
Okay, well, I move that we approve Rodney Sheaves knock pro top for the transport officer position in the sheriff's department.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Okay, so the matter of a rail trail. Last year would put, I think I put Matt's email in your packet. You guys agreed to help. You split the costs basically. So for this, they need a matter of the minutes basically this year that you're going to do it moving forward. Six thousand three hundred dollars, there it is. So your portion will be six thousand three hundred dollars towards that, so.
That was an estimate. I move that we approve it moving forward. Of course, they can't, we can't be obliged more than a year at a time, but that we do it like we've done in the past unless we revisit it ourselves that we go ahead and approve it. It's within Rus spending authority, so it should be.
I'll second that. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
And the next item is they have asked for a letter of support to have a swing. One of the West Virginia almost having swing put on the trails that did say the letter of support from the commission.
I move we approve the support letter.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Website.
Yep, so Amy and I looked through all the stuff. We actually had a Zoom or Teams, whatever, with revise to go over how their website works. Anthony looked at the sales agreement. He's good. And we would like them to be the ones to design and host our website.
And I agree with them. I've done a lot of research over the past couple of years on this with Amy in particular. And they really did a good job on the ones that I reviewed that they've done. They look better than any of the other ones from some of other vendors that are pretty popular statewide. The first year total, now how, what's the ongoing? Is this going to be an annual?
They will host site, yes. They'll host and then.
So the design costs aren't going to be redundant, but the hosting
Yeah.
Cost is going to be redundant. So this year's total is sixteen thousand one hundred dollars, but then it looks like the annual cost is going to be around thirty four hundred, right?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we hire revise to finally overhaul our website, get us into this century.
I second the motion. We have a motion and second on the floor and power lead, uh, all those in favor? We have been working on this for the.
Four years.
Oh, man, longer.
What was the timeline, Amy? Was it about?
Yeah.
Depends on how many times it's, you know, revised and what they've done.
Listen, I did a lot of work on that one and it never went anywhere.
This is something to bring us up. This is great. Okay, next.
Did you guys get to see the latest track of this?
Yes. I have no way, no.
We could skip it till he has a chance to look at it.
You want to skip back to the D P? Okay, so the D P called about the county owns some property in Summerly. And it was dated to the county from, was it North Hills Group, I think, for the purpose of acid mine drainage? Well, they're filing, this was several years back. And they are now starting to work on that project. But they need like an agreement of some type with, to actually start that process. So if y'all agree to it, I can tell them we need to get the place for you guys to sign it. But they don't want to keep going forward if it's not something you're going to do. Do you know where, um, you know, I'm talking about? The old Summerly Strip?
Yeah.
The D R C used to be there. Pastos is right there. You go down that hill and it's all it's pretty much small plan mostly.
This was four years before I started.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while.
Yeah. It, it's a, I think it not only will help our area, but it'll also help other areas of the state because they're going to be doing several studies and several tests there. But it's a, it's an area that was underpopulated and I, I think that it would be a good deal to go ahead and allow them to use that as long as they put everything back in proper order.
I'm open to it too, but I don't like to vote on something without seeing the terms.
Well, I mean, I would say you could vote to move forward with developing an MOU.
To invite them to propose an MOU?
There's not, um, really, there's not that true one.
Okay, so I move that we invite DEP to propose an MOU for the Summerly easement.
I'll second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor? Okay, let's go back to number ten, please.
You okay with that?
I am.
So I move that we approve the commission's response letter to Judge Bass regarding his request for his office space.
Second. Here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Budget revisionary? Okay, so this is our end of year budget revision. The bulk of this is again grant payouts that we're going to do probably the twenty fifth. May not, may have to revise the budget for next year and do them in July depending on how long it takes. That's about that and the jail bill. We had to up that budget by four thousand dollars because it hit our highest. So crazy. And then other little stuff, like when people leave and there's a vacation payout, you have to revise the salary. Or a new person starts and they take the insurance, so. Mostly little stuff with the exception of the grants.
I even told Ruth that, you know, we're two weeks ahead of time on this revision, so.
Yeah, so they changed their due date. Normally it's set about the third week, but they're due Friday, Tuesday.
All right, well, I moved we approved the budget revision as presented.
Second. Here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
We've got the, is Mr. Eric here?
Yes, they are.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I've come to you this morning from the Fayetteville Lions Club. My name's John Eric. The, the Fayetteville Lions Club would like to commemorate and recognize nationally known West Virginia basketball players that have played basketball in the Memorial Building. And I'm going to give to you a, this is a mock-up of a sixteen by sixteen inch aluminum, cast aluminum plaque that we would, we're asking permission to put in, in, in the Memorial Building. So if you take one of those and pass it now. We realize there's been a lot of great players that's played in the Memorial Building. And we, uh, we have, uh, we have a, a five uh, person committee to do research and verify uh, some of the players that's displayed in the Memorial Building. Okay, but the club's asking permission to place the sixteen by sixteen inch cast aluminum plaque inside the gym of the Memorial Building as recognition. Also, the Fayetteville Lions Club has raised money for this project. So basically, we're just asking permission to put it in. Okay, and also, I brought a, uh, a drawing of the inside of the Memorial Building. It's not up to scale now, but I think you get the picture. Stages on that end. This is the Maple Avenue lobby and the basketball court, the bleachers on both sides which are pushed up. And we plan to put the plaque in this position here. Okay, there's about an eight foot paneling in that area, in the, in the, uh, the plaque will be held by, by four wood screws. We have a mechanical engineer in the Lions Club. He's probably capable of putting four screws in. I think.
Help us with the porch over there.
Okay, I would also like to mention some of the players, uh, to the people assembled here. Plus you have, have, uh, uh, on your mockup who they are. And, uh, many people in this community don't realize what a big deal the Memorial Building. When it was first constructed was. And we had a lot of great players played in the Memorial Building. We have three Hall of Famers, Naismith Hall of Famers that played in the Memorial Building. Jerry West at WBU played for fourteen years for the LA Lakers. Hot Rod Hunley, uh, won the, uh, Naismith Hall of Fame Kirk Gally Media Award, he played there. Al Greer from Marshall played there, he played fifteen years in the NBA, mostly with the Philadelphia seventy sixers. We had three players play there that were in the Olympics. Jerry West in nineteen sixty, Mike Barrett in nineteen sixty eight. And Vernal Coles, uh, of nineteen, in nineteen eighty eight. Uh, we also had a, a two-time NBA Coach of the Year play there. Uh, Mike Dantoni, okay, so we wanted, we wanted the community to. Understand that these are about the biggest time players. And they're, and they're West Virginia guys, okay? And that's the reason we, there's been a lot of great players play there, some of them weren't from West Virginia, we only included the West Virginians. And we tried to narrow it down to this group. Realizing that there were many, many, many other good players, great players displayed there. But we, we whittled our, well, we didn't whittle, actually, we, we decided to include these players that you have. Uh, on your mockup, uh, of the plaque, so. I'm asking permission if we can proceed and order, uh, the, the cast aluminum plaque. Okay, to install in the, in, inside the Memorial Building gym, we don't want to take anything away from. Veterans, that's the reason why we want to put it inside the gymnasium.
And then Park Board, has the Park Board discussed this?
We have discussed it, but if, if, I mean, today we could go right through, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I like it too, I mean, this is really, really cool.
Positive, it's a positive thing for Memorial.
Yes.
It is, well, I move that we approve this effort and I thank you for taking it on.
Well, I, we have our five member, uh, committee is here, who are president and. I might notice too that four out of the five of us, uh, have, uh, college basketball experience. Uh, Jerry is our historian and he was the chairman of the committee. And he's quite a basketball historian, so that really, really, the, uh. Uh, they're the ones that's responsible for all of this.
Do, do we have to put Bimbo on there from Virginia Tech, I mean, come on.
Well, he is from.
I'm just, I'm just, I understand, he's an Olympian and he's from Lewisburg, that's okay.
Can we put it in italics?
Or pencil. I second the motion. Can we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so the next is the potential courthouse closure for the.
Well, I keep looking, but.
It'll change.
It'll change anyway, so.
We haven't gotten any notification, haven't, that they're gonna.
No.
End this June nineteenth, is it, is it a holiday?
No, if, if the governor calls it, we can, we better have to, you know, and we would have to do it anyway, he already voted to do that, so. Um, I've, I have talked to Chief Judge Ewing about this and he was able to get permission from the Supreme Court, there was some question about. Whether he had the authority to call a, a holiday for the courts, um, on, if the governor hadn't called a holiday, but. But they advised him that he does have the authority based on courthouse renovations, which this is, because we are paving all of our parking lots in the same two days. Um, so we're gonna do it on West Virginia Day and I move that we, uh, approve a courthouse closure. Um, for June nineteenth, facilitate that work.
Second the motion. Motion second on the floor, all those in favor.
And Ruth, could you reach out to Judge Ewing after, let him know, please?
And the parking lots really, really needed.
Well, now you reach out to him, just let him know what you, you know, what's going on.
Okay, um. Can we, uh, go ahead and take a small break until we start the next one, please?
Yes. Yeah, three minutes.
Well, we can take a little.
Yeah, the, the zoning thing.
Okay, well, you'll have to go quickly there.
I can.
Commissioner Taylor.
So are we taking a break or not? Are we taking a break?
Yeah, go ahead and take a break. Okay, welcome back to our meeting, um, we're going, um, out to a zoning. Those my paper app here.
Mr. Loman, is your counsel coming this morning?
Okay, so Angela.
I, I really don't want to proceed without Mr. Dove here, I, I don't think that's a good idea, um, what do you think? Well, here's the reason, we've heard this request before.
Yeah.
And denied it, we're gonna hear it again, changes the facts, however, um, you know. I want to hear Mr. Dove's arguments on this issue, on why we should change our mind. And, um, so, and I don't want Mr. Loman here, you know, with, especially with me up here, making a decision. Um, without Mr. Dove here to make his arguments for him.
Was it, was it your intention to have Mr. Dove here, in other words, he is your still retain counsel of the rep? Yeah. Do you, you have any idea to have any available?
I texted him, he might be able to text me back, but he hasn't yet. Um, Mr. Loman, do you object for us to continue with the meeting and just give him time and see if we can, but you said depositions, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's not gonna be out.
Probably not, let's say about ten, twenty minutes, three, six, nine, I don't know. I think it would be advisable because I presume you all are here, other people are here today.
Let's let them speak today, well, I guess, uh, I'd be taking witnesses without.
Why don't, why don't we wait like twenty minutes and see if you hear back from them?
Okay.
We can handle a couple of other things, wait twenty minutes or so, you're back from them and then decide if. We need to continue once on it, um, you know, I, I hate all these people are here, you know, um. So why don't, why don't we do that?
Okay, um, so the, the issue is, for those of you who came all the way here, is that, um, Mr. Loman has a lawyer. And with me being a lawyer and us having a lawyer here, um, it's not really fair for us to hear this issue when his lawyer was supposed to be here and was unable to. So we don't want to get in a position where we take evidence and make a decision and, and then it's compromised because we didn't give him his due process, so. That's what the issue is, um.
Well, yeah, why don't we just, uh.
We'll give it a few minutes, see if, see if, uh, I did text Mr. Dove and, and so hopefully he's in a position where he can text me back and give me a. Thumbs up or thumbs down on whether he'll make it and we'll revisit this in a few minutes.
So we can talk to the, uh, Park Board.
About the bylaws.
Hello again, hello. My name is Diane Carlson, I am the, I know, right, I am the Executive Director of the Fayette County Family Resource Network, but I currently serve. As the Board President for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, uh. Over the past couple of months, we've been looking at our bylaws, as you can see at the very top, the last time it was looked at was twenty seventeen. So it's been, uh, it's been a while, the main change that I sent over, I indicated in red, I'm not sure. That's been printed in red, yeah, um. It starts on page two, I believe, and it mainly deals with section two, which is membership and organizations. So this very start of page two, we're set section two.
Okay.
Uh, what we did is we made some adjust, adjustments to the membership. Uh, I'm just gonna run through them really quickly, and if you have questions at the end, we can cover those, we kept the first three. Being representatives of the districts, so Plateau, Valley and New Haven, there's no change there. We kept number four, a senior, there's no change there, number five is our first change for education, we combined education with. The high school students, we have struggled ever since I became a member of the board in twenty nineteen to actually have a high school student on our board. So we did combine the previous separation into one, so education does include that high school student member. Healthcare stayed the same, social services is new on the old bylaws, it was the Fayette County Living Well Work Group. Which is the group that I was initiated in when I became the F R I Director, and that group is. No, no longer functioning and wasn't functioning in twenty nineteen when I took over as Director, and it still doesn't now, so we adjusted to just be social services, which. Kind of encompasses what I do and what other people in Fayette County could do. Uh, number eight, recreation and trails are combined, they used to be separate, and we combined them, and number nine. Previously, it was trails and conservation, but we put trails and recreation together for this change. And kept conservation as its own, so. In, in summary, there's really not a whole lot of changes, we just deleted the one living well work group that doesn't exist. We combined a few and we separated conservation, so there's really not a whole lot of major changes that we made, but. We wanted to represent the group that we currently have right now in a more concise way, especially. Since a lot of us have reached our term limits, we look to be phasing out some members of our board and we want to have. Clear membership guidelines for when new members are brought in. And that's the only change we made, is gonna be on that section.
I think those are good changes and I appreciate your walking us through it because my first, my first instinct, seeing all the different qualifications was, can they find people to staff this port? And it sounds to me like you've already considered that and combined a bunch of requirements, so, um, I, I support these changes, I'm gonna move we approve them.
Second, have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Short and sweet, huh? Okay, you heard back from.
Not yet. Okay, um. Do you want to do executive session?
Well, no, uh, we got a few minutes, um. Tim gives you information on houses that burn down or catch on fire.
If it's a complete loss, no.
And it, and it helps because we have that extra funding to assist people with their homes. If they need to get them turned down and stuff, so Josh, that's what I was sending it to you, so I cleared up the mud. But Tim does a good job communicating with Angela so that she can reach out to them. So if we can get everybody doing that, that would help.
Yeah, we're welcome, that's more of our association.
Okay, appreciate that. Do we want to go ahead and, and move into executive session at this point?
We could, and then we could come out if Evan texts me back, um. Do you want to just, if, if he doesn't text back within the next twenty minutes, do we want to just tell everybody they can go?
Yeah, because I, I agree with you, if we get into this and, and he's not here, it could proceed, so.
Okay, so if I hear back from him within the next twenty minutes, so, um, well, it would have been twenty minutes from when I called him.
So it'd be five more minutes, six more minutes.
Well, I texted him at ten oh five, so let's give him until ten twenty five, so if I don't hear, you don't have us coming back in here by ten twenty five. You can go ahead and go, we'll reset it, can we reset it for the twenty fifth? Do we have to? Yeah, so we need to send a new notice, but our next meeting is on June twenty fifth at nine. And let's put that hearing early, so if folks come, they don't have to sit through everything. So we'll make it at nine fifteen on the twenty fifth, if we're not back in here by ten twenty five. Okay, if he texts me back, we'll come back in and deal with this and then go. Go after, finish what we're doing, but this time I'm gonna move we go into executive session to discuss, um, the PSD contract negotiations. Uh, reference item nine, the nine thirty item on the agenda. Um, and items fifteen and sixteen on the exhibit list, MOU terms. For the fire truck purchases and the potential building purchase for, uh, DRC expansion, all contract negotiation issues. We'll discuss with legal counsel.
Maybe once we.
Everyone, the rich paper.
I'll wear it back on.
Okay, welcome back to the meeting. We, um. We're in executive session, no decisions were made. And now we're gonna continue on with our agenda items.
So we are at the MOU.
Do we want to revisit the? Planning, planning commission.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, we don't have a date, so Angela's not in here anymore, is she? So apparently, the twenty fifth is not gonna work for Evan Dove. So we're waiting for Angela to work out a date with his assistant. And then I would like her to reach out specifically to those neighbors who were here, if she knows who they are, they probably signed in.
Yeah.
To make. Yeah, but I want her to like call and make sure they saw it because they were here and I told them the twenty fifth and now it's not the twenty fifth. So I don't want them to waste another day of off work, you know, for a postponement. So we'll probably need to revisit that motion actually, and just strike the matter from the agenda until it's noticed. So I move that, uh, we strike the planning commission recommendation from the agenda until. Angela can set up a date with Mr. Loman's counsel.
Second.
Got a motion second on floor, all those in favor? Okay, next, Ruth.
MOU.
Okay, um. MOU, uh, has been completed. With terms and policy. We'll turn that over to our attorney, Mr. Taylor.
All right, so we drafted an MOU regarding the, uh, fire engine purchases, uh, that the County Commission approved a few meetings ago. Uh, regarding, um, I think it was three fire engines were approved to be purchased. Three, there were a number of fire engines that were approved to be purchased for, uh, for, uh, several, uh, fire departments and. Uh, part of that, uh, vote was to, uh, enter in an MOU regarding this and just. And the, and the purpose of the MOU was to outline just a couple of things, uh, one is just to set forth that the county has, you know, agreed to. Set aside eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is essentially two hundred thousand dollars per year per fire department that's receiving the engine. Totalling up to eight hundred thousand, uh, of the fire, excess fire loading funds to purchase, uh, the new fire engines, um. And then the MOU goes forth to kind of set forth certain terms related to this agreement, one of them is. Uh, essentially that the, the money is gonna stay in the possession of the County Commission, not gonna be given over to the fire. Uh, departments to hold and make repayments and that, what will happen is under the MOU is the fire department will submit the invoice. For the truck payment, County Commission will promptly pay, uh, that invoice up to two hundred thousand dollars per year. Totalling eight hundred thousand dollars, um, the other aspect of, of this is, um. What, what happens with the fire engine when, uh. The fire department or the municipality, if it's municipality, if they're involved in that decision, uh, what happens to that? The fire department or the municipality, if it's municipality, if they're involved in that decision, uh what happens to that engine? Uh when um? The uh fire department determines that it needs to be retired or replaced or whatever. On that aspect, just a couple of things to make very crystal clear. One is this fire engine will be the. Owned in the property of the fire department or the municipality, whatever. County commission has no ownership of it at all. County commission will have no decision-making authority. Over the fire engine. It will be solely up to the fire department or their municipality, whatever um to determine. When it's done, right? The only thing that this M O U does is when the fire department makes its decision that it's it's done. That uh they notify the commission that wanna replace the truck that you purchased here. Um and we be in the reason we want that notification is not to disagree or tell you no this, that, or the other. Is to just make sure that. That once we have knowledge of that, that we advertise that to the other fire departments in the county to see if any of them would want it. I understand that you all may have already been doing that through the fire association. And what would practically happen is you would notify us of that and then. We would just make sure that the fire association has offered that to anybody in the county uh first.
As a replacement.
As a replacement. And then um the uh. In in that that's what we would like to do um with that. It's just to make sure that if there's a fire department in county that has a need. That if an engine, that one of these three engines is being purchased, is gonna be replaced, that some other county fire volunteer fire department. Have the opportunity to take that truck. Um if however, the truck is sold to some entity out of county. This agreement would require uh the prorated. Ca- uh sales price. Uh that the cap county commission uh contributed to the fire engine. Uh any money received on that prorated basis is paid back into the fire levy to then be used to help. Offset the cost for future engine purchases. I understand that a lot of times when we sell these trucks, it's not. For a lot of money, so we kind of understand that it will be just a little bit of money. But it's not going back to the county, it's going back into the levy funds to be used for future purchases. I mean, other than that, that's essentially what. What we are agreeing to or what the M O U sets for. Any any questions about that? Okay.
In previous discussions. It's stated by the commission that excess monies that exist. Current. Which is closer to five million dollars. One million of that was allocated to projects that you're referring to by the law. And that would be. And you did not want to keep that money that you've been told that money.
Or allocated.
Or allocated. The monies for this replacement, the eight hundred thousand for. Will come from that month. So those monies exist now. You've also stated they are paid for the paid off trucks that were out there now. Because you didn't, it didn't make any sense to drag out the payments, they didn't perform. So all that money is sitting there now and you don't wanna keep it there, what you said. If you wanna pay the trucks off as soon as possible, so you're not paying extra interest. Why drag out the payments over the four years of the levy at two hundred thousand dollars each? Because that means that everybody is gonna have, the municipalities will be having to pay the interest payments because of the. Municipals sign contracts. That's the first thing. Second thing is that. Part of this says that. Not that the municipalities will have the option, but that they will agree to donate. Municipalities agree to donate the engine being replaced to the question department. So this, and I've heard this for about a minute now, that when. Purchases are made by municipality, the property comes, the property of the municipality. So by this M O U, you're basically saying you're telling municipality what they're gonna do with their property. How they were disposed of. And then when they dispose of it, what they're supposed to get money out of before they're supposed to do with money. So those are some of the problems I see I I had to take this factor into consideration.
You want me to speak to this?
I I can and you can, yeah, I mean, so the the um let me address the second issue first. Um the first issue probably is something the commission will have to discuss, but from a legal standpoint is. Yes, the property is the municipalities, uh but this is an agreement that if you receive this line, here's what you're agreeing to do. With the truck that you're agreeing, the engine that you're agreeing to receive. And so uh what we're what we're trying to do is. You're getting rid of the truck. You wanna make sure that the people within the county. Have an opportunity to have first, basically first right of refusal on the truck. If the if.
First word of refusal, if the municipality is going to get rid of the truck. And being able to say, y'all wanna buy this, first word of refusal, that's one thing, but this right here says that they agreed to donate the truck. That's not for first word of refusal. That's just saying that you will give this piece of. Equipment that's owned by the municipality to whoever decides that they want it. That's different than saying we're gonna sell it at a fair market price of like ten thousand dollar and saying y'all have first word of refusal to buy this truck.
Well, because the the money was bought, there the engine was eight hundred thousand dollars worth of the engine was purchased. By use of the county as a whole, taxpayers paying into the excess left. So it's not like the mun- if the if the municipality wants to buy the truck on its own. Then this agreement wouldn't wouldn't apply and you just pay the money and the municipality will do whatever you want, but by agreeing to accept. The excess fire levy funds to help purchase the this engine, which is paid for by everybody in the county.
Including the municipal residents.
Right, but it, right? That we wanna make sure that the county is taking care of first. That's the purpose of that provision is to make sure that things purchased with countywide money. That if if the mun- whoever decides that they wanna dispose of it, that the county. The citizens of the county continue to reap that benefit um of that. And practically speaking. You know, if the ca- think about it in terms of this, if the the county is giving. Eight hundred thousand dollars to to a fire department to pay for a fire engine that's paid for by all of the county taxpayers. If you give it within the county to another volunteer fire department as opposed to selling it. That doesn't, that all that does is that helps. I mean, it was the county's money, it was the county excess taxpayer money to begin with, wasn't the municipality, it was the county's. Taxpayer money. So what all you're doing is you're just shifting that eight hundred thousand dollars benefit is going from, say. Fayetteville now is gonna go to Dolly River or.
No, eight hundred thousand would go a quarter, if you sell these trucks. It's not eight hundred thousand worth of value.
Sure, but it's still an asset that was purchased and would maybe still have value. I mean, the the other volunteer fire departments could look at it and be like. That truck is way past its useful life and we don't, we don't want, we don't want. But if there is a fire volunteer fire department within the county that does want it, it just would make sense to.
And not just to collect it or, you know, something like that, but because they have a need, cuz they have something that's, they're worried. I've had some fire chiefs tell me. They've been worried about some of their engines, you know, failing or something going wrong. So it's it's to accommodate. A need, not so they can, you get rid of your, you know, extra fire engine to give it so somebody else can collect it. It's not for that purpose. And and I had written a note in here. We do need to add some language cuz when I said as a replacement, that wasn't clear and. The way um we had proposed it, so I I added a little modification.
So you are agreeing that. Anything that's purchased by municipality becomes a property of the municipality, but your point of view is. And that's what law is, what's your point of view is you're asking municipality to give up that part of law basically and agree to say.
Well, if they want to.
They're giving up their, they're giving up their right to completely troll their property aside.
But they don't have a right to a certain percentage of fire levy funds. So so the issue is if you want the new engine, then you're gonna help us accommodate the greater mission of the fire service in Fayette County. With whatever you're replacing, if there's a need.
In reality, when we meet that timeline, let's say fifteen years, it could be long. In most cases historically. If an engine is being taken out of service and let's say a a need arose from another department. In most cases, those engines are donated to those other departments. There's not a monetary.
Which is fine, which is fine in here.
Which is what we want. That's actually what we want to happen because the the eight hundred thousand dollars of county money has gone to benefit. Fayetteville for fifteen years and then if this truck, this Fayetteville decides that it needs to be retired. And another entity is like, you, we could use it. Well, then that that benefit that was given to Fayetteville now transitions within county. And which you guys already do, so we're just formalizing that in the M O U.
You're creating a purchase that's in the name of Fayetteville or Oak Hill or Mount Hope. And it's property of the city, but you're extending language that I call rolling from the grave. Where you're gonna determine what transpires on the far end of this, when logically. There's not gonna be a monetary, you know.
But there may not in one of yours, but this has to apply. This is gonna transition into a policy and it's gonna apply to any fire department, so. A fifteen-year-old engine in one of your departments is not gonna be in the same shape as a fifteen-year-old engine in Boomer. You know, so tha- that's kinda where we're coming from here. Um the municipalities, you know, if if they wanna. You know, it's my view, if they wanna benefit from the fire levy, which is the intent of the fire levy in part. Um they need to be willing to consider the needs of the other fire departments in the county when we are replacing. Buying a new engine for that department. They they need to be willing to consider, you know, first donation, obviously preferably donation. Or if the sale goes through, then giving that money back to the fire levy because that's what funded the new engine.
Well, that's what the second part of saying, right, because it's not, it's never been that.
Right, right.
That totally.
Correct, just just the percentage, just the percentage of the fire levy contributed, not the municipality's percentage or the overall value.
Prorated percentage, if the eight hundred thousand is only sixty percent of the total cost and if you sell it. Then whatever you get from it, from the sale out of county, sixty percent goes back into the fire levy to help fund. Future uh purchases. That that that's all. I mean, tha- that's all that is.
I have to explain this to the council and I said.
If they wanna call. Yeah, and if they wanna call me to discuss it, I'm happy to discuss it with them. Um but yeah, it's a prorated, it's not, you know, it's, and I know this would never happen. But let's say you after sixteen years, you retire an engine and all of a sudden, for whatever reason, that engine is worth. Five million dollars, right? Well, the fire levy would only be reimbursed up to eight hundred thousand. Right, if you sold it out, you know what I'm saying? Like, we're not saying, well, we get seventy percent of the purchase price no matter what. We only wanna be reimbursed up to what the levy. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Like, I know that's a hypothetical, but that probably will never happen, but.
That's fantasy.
It is, it's it's, but you never know, people get weird about collecting. Yeah, sometimes there's random markets for things.
And with regard to the to the money that's in the budget, this this is giving us the option. We can pay, we can vote to pay it off early. We can vote to to pay off certain or buy certain ones outright and. Um but we need to take a look at everything cuz you guys have other requests pending before us with regard to the new fire department that we need to consider also, so. We wanna make sure we can fund everything.
Really have a problem with that because stated since you decrease the amount of. Yet if you add it up, all the operating. Fire departments, that will be a hundred seventy thousand dollars.
You wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so a couple of things on that one is, first off, the the fire levy fund is helping. As you've mentioned, there's four million plus in there. Um so the reason that language is in there is not because anybody's trying to pull some tricks and say, oh, oops, there's no money in the levy fund. What it is is the county has to have the fiscal flexibility. To if a catastrophic event occurs that drains the excess levy funds. Where there's a catastrophic event that that ends up having to drain the fire levy funds and then there has to be new priorities. And maybe that fire engine payment is not a priority because we gotta rebuild half of the fire departments because of the catastrophic event. And it it's not because of anything where it where people are trying to get out of this agreement. They voted to fund. And it's going to be funded unless there's a catastrophic event that would would take away the 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 fund. The excess levy fund for this next levy. So it's more of a a legal requirement for fiscal flexibility that the county commission has to have. On top of that. The way that the levy was written and voted on by the voters is that the next fiscal, next uh. Fiscal cycle, next budget year, the levy automatically goes back up to the the number that it was. Unless they vote to reduce, right? So this is, that reduction is a one-year reduction for now. If they look at it and they say, oh, no, we had significant amount more. Uh drawdown from that excess levy funds. We gotta, we gotta go back to the, you know, it's back to the top. We'll collect all the way back up to the top. It's allowed to. To for them to ping pong back up to make sure that they're not overtaxing the citizens based upon the rates uh on that. And so this. Has to protect us for the worst case scenario, protect everybody for the worst case scenario. We have to anticipate that there, we don't expect or we don't expect. We don't have any plans and there's there's nothing that we're aware of presently, we're saying this on the record, that would. Prevent the commission from meeting their obligations under this. But there's always force unforced things. What if there's another massive? I mean, what if there's an earthquake that takes down half the valley down there and all of a sudden, we we gotta rebuild all of the. All of the fire departments. That might take, that might take priority over funding the remaining balance on the fire.
Well, the simple that are not protected are municipalities where this. Because something may happen and you can't guarantee that you're gonna be able to fund it. Yes, municipalities that have signed it with the people building their trucks, that we are going to pay this much money. So the people that are not protected are the municipalities.
How are those contracts structured? I mean, do they structure it within a four-year? Is it a four-year contract? Or do you do you set it for a longer payment period and then just try to pay it and?
Traditionally, yes, that's what we've done. It's it's not feasible to try to finance. Uh purchase that magnitude for a four-year period. So we might extend it for an eight-year period. And we pay with it with levy funds to a certain point and then we might use if we have. Allocations from state insurance funding that we can use to pay the balance off. But I have a question in regard to, I know it's been the commission's focus. To save taxpayer dollars in regard to the reduction on the levies. But in turn. Why not fund this upfront to every department when they may just purchase because. We're going to incur financial charges in regard to purchasing this, you know, it's like you don't invite bar or own. You're gonna have interest charges if we pay for this upfront and there's incentives from the manufacturers. That if we would do that, you're gonna be saving money by doing that upfront. We're not incurring interest charges and there's gonna be incentives from the manufacturers to pay for that upfront. So I wish you would consider.
Well, so, well, so I I agree, this M O U would not pro prohibit. them from paying it off.
The distribution.
Yeah, th- th- so in other words, if, if you all make a request once purchase orders are signed and say, okay, hey, guys, if we pay eight hundred thousand dollars now upfront, it's going to substantially reduce blah, blah, you know, all the things that you just said. The commission can still vote and say, yes, let's do that. You know, and it may be a situation where the commission looks at it, they look at the budgets, they look at the numbers and they're like, okay, well, it makes sense for us to do it for two of these, but we need to, we need to spread this third one out a little bit to make sure we maintain our health and fire levy. But I mean, Ruth's the accountant, she, she knows the numbers better than I do and, and frankly, probably everybody. And she would know what the commission can and cannot do in terms of upfront outlays of substantial amount of money. But thi- this is, this is kind of like the floor, not the ceiling. This MOU is the floor, this is the ground floor, we can go way above it, but we're always going to fall back to this floor.
Right, well, I encourage you to consider that. It's no different than the, the recent decisions that the commission made to pay these trucks that are already financed and they're on the, the far end of that. Uh, it was a, a decision that was apparently logical to commission's, uh, wisdom to do that. But I'm just asking that you consider that. We're going to be saving money in financial costs. And if it's feasible to do that with the funding that you have in place, that we're going to reduce the cost of the trucks upfront, number one. Number two, we're going to do away with the financial charges that if we finance those for like, say, a four to eight year period.
Can you guys get us some figures on that? You know, ba- based on your discussions you're having for your trucks, can you get that in? Let us know, like, what kind of discount you're gonna, you know, I believe you. Obviously, I understand how interest and all that works. But, but if you could get us some figures, so we would know, like, what, what we're dealing with and kind of look at the big picture. Because I agree with you, I mean, I would love to pay for them upfront.
And, you know, not only is it an incentive or a reduction on the entire purchase price, but in the past, we've been given incentives and, and this would be underlying in regard to if you make that decision. But for instance, uh, cabin chassis is delivered to a manufacturer. If you pay for that upfront, you might get a reduction of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars on the delivery.
Substantial, yes.
It's, it can be substantial and as you know, we have to buy through these persons. I mean, that's, you have to say law. Uh, coming up, you can break, we might be charged and might be able to get you some sort of a that you nowadays way of structure going, that's going to be hard.
Just whatever they're telling you that you, you know, when they say, if you give me cash today, you're going to get this, save this. You can just give us a ballpark, I mean, that'll, that'll just help us, you know, look down the road and see what we need to do.
To, if all three departments decide to go with one manufacturer, for instance, that could be impacting on the bottom line of the purchase itself.
You're going to go to green? You're going to go to green?
Well, I think the more.
Just kidding.
You know, I, I do have a question though. The, the trucks that, you know, eight hundred thousand isn't going to get you much truck. I mean, let's be serious. Uh, each of you have always had a, a better truck because you do a few more calls and, and you have some other things that you need to get. So neither one of you are probably looking at a truck that's a base cost of eight hundred grand. You're probably looking at one, one point two, one point four, looking at that. So you could use that money and plus that would reduce the amount of interest going toward the municipality. So it could help the municipality as well. Um, so yeah, I like that idea of if you can get us some more information, that way it would help out all aspects of that.
Usually it's a percentage. You pay a certain percentage or like Tim said, if you go ahead and pay, because they're buying the cabin chassis. You know, they have to pay for those upfront. So, yeah, with that, and may also get a percentage, well, whether you put down a higher percentage of discount, yeah, because like anything else, a lot.
And if you're talking about a timeline, we signed an agreement today, that truck won't be delivered, it could be in excess of two years.
Yeah, so I think, again, this is, this is the, this is the woodwork, not the, the ceiling. And it sounds like if you get the numbers, like, if you put down twenty percent about, you know, fifty percent, whatever, this is what the result, if you got that num- those numbers to the commission, you know, they could run the math and it, it may make, it may make the most fiscal sense. I'm just throwing again hypotheticals out here, that they put five hundred thousand down upfront as opposed to four eight hundred. And then ne- next year, they do the three hundred, I mean, there, there are many different ways to approach this. And obviously, the county wants to figure out what's going to be the most economically efficient and best way to do this.
And we don't want to cost your municipalities more money either.
Right, so, but.
Better for all of us. If we can look ahead and see that incentive, you know.
Exactly.
Here, here's your number, well, a million dollars.
Right.
But it could be sub- that substantially reduced on a major purchase. And, uh, paid upfront, we could be saving, you know.
Lots.
Sixty to fifty.
Sure, so that, that it would be, so it sounds like the commission is willing to look at that, they just need to see the numbers and, and all of that, but.
At least ballpark.
Right, ballpark it, and then if there's an event where, I mean, there's always a, 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 a scale of diminishing return that, uh, you know, five hundred thousand is the max, is the best deal we get. But if we put eight, we're not really seeing the bit, you know, so we got to kind of figure all those things out. But all this does is just create, creates the floor on that, um.
Like I said, they're even going to have to take this back to our city. Council, because they're going to have to agree to, to like.
Absolutely, yeah.
The, the cities are the ones that are going to be hanging out there. I mean, they're not the, not the county, because the county's got the money, if they decide they're not going to spend it, they don't have to spend it. But we're still going to have to be the ones to pay.
But this agreement also though, to this agreement also though, guarantees, essentially guarantees that eight hundred thousand dollars coming from the county, barring a catastrophic event.
Well, also you got in here, it's dependent on taking enough money from them.
That's the catastrophic event that I'm talking about, because the fund is healthy and the fund is going to remain healthy even after this next year's tax cycle where it diminishes down. But then it automatically reverts back up. This one year di- uh, diminishing down is not going to, um, uh,
Not going to cripple it.
Not going to cripple it, because they, they run the math and they run the math, um, regard, and, and the, these three truck purchases have been factored into the math. And so the math has been factored in to permit them to, to drop it this year, but it automatically reverts back up. Again, the math has been run, this is, they can do this, as we sit here today, we can do this. Barring a catastrophic event that would substantially zap the fire levy fund, which nobody foresees is going to happen.
No, but like, God forbid something bad happened at one of your departments where you have a lot of equipment and engines and stuff. Like, that's, that's the kind of thing that, you know, he's anticipating, you know. You know, one of our major departments, any, if a derecho hit down or tornado or something and, and devastated one of your departments, we would have a lot of scrambling to do to try to replenish what's. Well, yeah, you do, but.
That's exactly right, yeah, the insurance that will cover that. So even a catastrophic event may not even cripple the, the fire, excess fire levy.
Right.
So now you're proposing that the excess money from the past levies that are in there, you're proposing to hold on to some of that in case there is a catastrophic event that you're talking about.
No, that's not what, it's, it's just, the fund is healthy right now. Meaning that it can, the fund has substantial amount of money that it can cover all of the expenses uh, that have been allocated in the last budget cycle. As well as the truck purchases, as well as paying off the prior truck purchases. And even with the collection of the, this upcoming year anticipated collection, the fund remains viable to pay for all of these things and into the future, right? There, there, it's not.
That's the, that's the excess that was the subject of such controversy.
I'm, I'm not, what do you?
That's the four point five to five million dollars that's sitting there. Two different things, there's that and there's the amount of money coming in from the levy that's just been approved that starts July first. And you're saying that that has been factored in and there's enough money to cover all this. That still leaves past money that was such a controversy that y'all said needs to be drawn back.
But yeah.
Now, it sounds like.
No, well.
Hold on to that.
It doesn't have to be drawn down, but it, it, it shouldn't just sit there without having a purpose. And, and so, you know, because I asked the question specifically, because I was in the audit interview. And I asked the question of the auditor, you know, well, can we keep money in there that we're putting in the eye for big purchases for fire? Because that was the exact example I used. And, and she said, yes, you know, so that's, that's not an issue.
Yeah, the, I mean, the money there, the, the agreement, the language in here is again, a flexibility issue in case unforeseen circumstances happen. It's not that there's any anticipation that there won't be sufficient money, there is sufficient money. And even there, there's sufficient money, there will remain to be sufficient money. But this is a, a requirement to per- per- permit the county commission to have some fiscal flexibility in case of, of a, of a catastrophic type of thing where if there's not a thing, I mean, that's, that's the only reason it's there, it's a, it's, it's, the, the majority of contracts contains similar type language when it comes to government funding. I mean, if you guys receive government funding from, um, FEMA or something like that in your funding documents, there is provisions in there that, you know, this is subject to, you know, congressional allocations and things outside of the. Yeah. Yeah, so this is the, this is, sim- this is, that's the purpose of that.
Going through this, in the past, we've always had a contract, your, your contract. And it specified exactly how much we were going to get. We tried to pay off these trucks inside the levy system. So at the end of the levy, they were paid for, okay, which would be the benefit of everybody bothering. Because otherwise you're looking at the levy fails then, okay. So we, I need to be sure about this, because when we're trying to set up our lease purchase agreements, we have to decide, like Tim said, we're going to try and do it in the four years of the levy and have a lease purchase agreement for four years. Or do we need to have a five-year or a six-year and allocate possible future monies from the state, which is not guaranteed either. That keeps much slave assistance to the next.
It's creating a risk on the municipality's part versus the county's part. And the municipality is the one that's creating the eight hundred thousand plus obligation beneath that. And our municipality especially right now is in a situation where they can't afford to take that risk.
And if I, this is a Tyrone, if we, if we don't get the eight hundred thousand, we definitely have to finance it for longer because we can't afford what the payment would be just going with the four years. If we don't get the money in case of the catastrophic event.
Tyrone, does, uh, Mount Hope help you with that, the city?
They're not.
No, sir.
Municipal fire department like these guys.
Okay. So see, these, these guys are different animals. I mean, not for animals, but I mean, it's a different view looking at the fire departments versus the rest of the fire departments.
Smithers is municipal now.
I thought maybe Montgomery.
Montgomery is municipal.
Smithers is too.
I don't think Ansted is, is it?
Oak, Oak Hill and Fayetteville is pretty comparable, but these others you're speaking of, I don't like they are comparable as well, Oak Hill.
Right, so that, that's why we are the way that we are as far as the MOU. Because if we don't get that eight hundred thousand, we have to finance a lot longer than what these other places are, because we wouldn't be able to afford to make that payment without that money.
Tyrone, are you looking at a truck that's eight hundred or less or eight hundred or more?
Eight hundred or more.
Okay.
I think what Michael was referred to, and I agree, if we can bring you those numbers back to show there's going to be savings above and beyond what our financial, uh, cost would be for financing these trucks. And if we're paying for those, let's say the eight hundred thousand dollar figure upfront, there's going to be substantial savings that I think it's, it's worth considering.
Well, how much time would you need to get those figures to us?
Um, I don't know, I'll check with the vendors to.
We're meeting again on the twenty fifth of this month.
Twenty fifth, yeah.
And get that back to you as, as it can. And, uh, uh, Echo John Cinnamon will have to pass this, uh, to the O file and then Carl Harrison.
If they want to talk to me about it, they can absolutely call me. I mean, if, if we need to massage some of the language on this allocation, the subject insufficient collection, we can massage it, but we still have to, I'm just telling you from a, from a commission standpoint, we have to have some sort of flexibility that if, if the, if the bottom drops out of the fund, that it's just, it's just that the bo- the bottom fallen out. I- it's not going to be the bottoms falling out because of anything the commission has done, it'll be a catastrophic event.
No, the bottom will fall out there. This would be anything that affects the levy that starts, uh, doesn't affect what's in there.
Right, well, right, unless there, unless there is uh, something that requires four point five million dollars to, that would be subject to excess levy. But, you know, like, a, a fire department blows up and, and it has to have, be rebuilt from the ground up and all their equipment has to be rebuilt. And, you know, there probably is insurance for that, but it may be a situation where, I mean, heaven forbid something would happen to the Fayetteville Fire Department, that would be a catastrophic event. Because it not only affects Fayetteville, that your fire department covers a lot. And if, if your fire department blew up and there was insufficient money to rebuild and get you guys helped out, that's part of the purpose of the excess fire levy fund is to have to, to fix that. And so if that happened, you know, we have, the, the county would have to reset the priority.
Extraordinary examples are, you know, could tell you that, that the likelihood of something like that happening is so low. You know what I mean? Um, for something to be so bad, the more likely is somebody's HVAC is going to go out or, you know, something like that, you know.
That wouldn't prevent, that wouldn't, that would not cause any issue with the continuing payment of the, of the, the fire.
Yeah, but I mean, I would really like to, to pay, pay him off or pay our part now. I really would, I mean, I, I think it'd be better, I don't like that you guys are always operating worrying about truck payments and stuff, I, I don't like that. You know, I would like, since we do collect a lot of money and we do have a lot of money in the levy, is to relieve that burden. So you can, you know, focus on the other things. And not, because I know how much these smaller departments are stressing over truck payment, I'm sure you guys do too. I mean, I, I just don't, you know, I think if we have the money in there that we should do it and I think everybody's open to considering it. So it's just a matter of getting us some data that we can work with.
I think we can bring that back to you that will show if I first do that for the expenditure of the funds as well as the bottom line first.
And frankly, I'll tell you, Chief Richardson, that, you know, despite Oak Hill's opinion of us, I don't want that municipality struggle the way it is. I hate that it's in the shape it's in and I, I don't, if this will help, I want to help it. So, you know, you can take that back to them too, that we're open to it and this may be moot, you know, these, these discussions. You know, as of the next meeting, you know, but, but we are going to have to, you know, well, I guess if we do pay it, this is moot.
Well, no, because of the provisions.
Oh, with the fire trucks, yeah, they would have to agree, you know, whatever you're replacing to, if we have a department that is in greater need.
And, and again.
I don't think that's a big thing, I think, I just know that it's going to be a question legally and Carl can address.
Sure, and, and again, if we need to massage the language, we can massage the language. This is, this is our, you know, current position. And you guys can come back to us and we can massage any language. But what we, but I'll just be telling you, um, and I've, and, and this is, the, the commission has made it was clear is they want some sort of, that there has to be language in there that, that county has benefited when this potentially benefited. Potentially benefited when this truck is retired in fifteen plus years. However, that language has to work out, okay? But it's gotta be in there that, you know, the, the county has to, because the county is. Giving eight hundred thousand dollars from all the people in the county with, to help everybody, so we wanna make sure that that money can. That money spent. If there's a future benefit that can be received in seventeen years to another department that we've preserved that. That, that's all, and it, it sounds like you gotta do that kind of already.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, so.
Protect us.
Yeah, ex- exactly. So all we're trying to do in this agreement is formalize that in, in language.
Well, like I said, that, that's a legal issue that the city would have to agree to.
Sure.
That's.
I, I, I agree. I think it's something that between our two attorneys and yourself, then we can come to some. Language that's not for me for everybody and that our councils can approve also.
Is Wes your city attorney right now?
Bill File.
Bill File. I don't know if I have his number or not.
But yeah, it, it's in, in.
Exactly, I think.
Yes, we, there's, we can talk and get that language clarified. Um, but the one thing though is. The commission does wanna be informed. Not because we wanna do anything, we just wanna know when you're. Replacing this truck that eight hundred thousand dollars was given to by the county. We just wanna know. You know, we, we gave out money, we just went out. Yeah, that, and, and then if you guys wanna put some language in there that the fire associate, I, I, I wanna. We can look at the language, but we gotta have some protection that this truck is retired. We kind of want. The county to have a, this is not the county, the other fire departments in the county to be able, if it's useful to. To pick that asset off if everybody is in an agreement on. I mean, that, that's kind of, that's. What we're trying to do.
Let, let's leave that as the discussion between these attorneys and yourself and ask Bill Cal with it, you can ask.
I, I agree. I agree. I think we can and I, I think, you know, we, we're, we're, we're. We hear what you all are saying. We're not trying to put our, stick our fingers in our ears and ignore you all. We're, we're trying to accommodate. You as best as we can, but. Sometimes our interests are a little bit different, you know what I mean? Like, you know, they're, they're looking at the taxpayer. They're, they're, the, the, this is money that the taxpayers are giving to the county. Uh, not willingly, uh, they're required taxes that are being given to the county for the county to manage. And so they just wanna make sure that they're fulfilling their role to manage that money properly, right? You all are looking like, well, we, we don't wanna sign on to something we can't pay for. And we don't want the floor ripped out from us and also you all have state law that dictates. Operations and things like that, so our interests are a little bit different, but we need to just try to come together and we, we're not trying to be adverse to you all. We're trying to. Work together to come up for a, a document that protects everybody and ultimately helps the taxpayers of this county. I mean, that, that's ultimately what we're trying to do. I mean, well, we're not trying to hold a gun to your head and make you do stuff. Cause frankly, we, we don't know when a truck should be retired or not. We don't know if after you use the truck, if it's usable by anybody else. Don't know, or if anybody else would want it. Don't, don't know, but we just wanna try to protect that. That's all we're trying to do.
So I do have, uh, I added a modification to the document that. I, we handed you guys, so if you would wait until Michael updates that. Um, I've passed it down and we've all looked at it, just, just to kind of clarify that replacement policy, because it's not for the purpose of. Letting another department collect fire engines. It's like if they have one that's in worse shape than one another department's giving up. That they have the option, you know, to receive that. So I put some more clarifying language and, and we can, um. Ruth will have a copy probably right after the meeting, because it's just a sentence, so. So before you give it to him, so we don't cause any confusion. Um, so I'm gonna move that we, um, approve the MOU draft in its current, uh, form, plus the sentence I added. At, um, the end of the sentence in paragraph six that I passed down to the commission and, uh, I'll hand to our council.
Second. Motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, and on the building for purchase, um, I move that we authorize our council to. Um, enter into negotiations with the seller of the building we're considering purchasing.
I second the motion. Motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Move toward your own.
Oh, yeah.